Talked about some of that last time. This, I think.
And if, but I'll.
Mike explaining because I don't know what I read in the pack.
I know. I was just thinking that maybe it was then I pulled up the address like that's. Yeah, Lake Life Farms. This would be the, the, the third time.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
But it's just, it's.
Experience. Huge change.
It's an easy one then, if it's just a name change, it's, we've already approved this.
Yeah. A bit more than.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
In one and a half minutes, we'll talk about for real.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry for the short notice. Sounds like you're prepared to be here. I kind of expect people to know that one of the things going to be on the agenda. But otherwise, why didn't you let me know? It's public information. You know. Some people don't feel that way. You don't know that feeling.
No.
You've never been through that.
Are you okay? We have a lot of separate issues tonight, but I don't think any one of them is in particular.
Have you heard from Mr. Hope?
Not, not personally.
Somebody did, I don't know who it is. You don't, not acquainted with all of it. On the board.
There we go.
Was I right?
Yep.
Yeah, then.
I don't know if that worked.
You're just making us all look better, you know that, right? What by?
With a suit.
No, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I got a haircut today too, so I'm like.
Right.
Showered this morning even.
Well, you're on it.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, it's seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So before we get to our roll call, um, we had a change to the, to our. Any commission up here. Ms. Lisa Atchison has just been added on and we need to do the oath of office.
You do. Ms. Atchison. I, Lisa Atchison, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the City Charter and the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs? And you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of planning commissioner to the best of your abilities?
I will.
Is Atchison is a city council member already and she's our city council representative now that. Mr. Hall is no longer on city council and a former planning commissioner, so this is not new to her, but. But if something's happened. Uh, we'll move on to roll call, so guess what the top of the list, Ms. Atchison?
Here.
Mr. Hall told me he cannot be here tonight. Mr. Hope here. Mr. Merlinton here. Isn't that Browski?
Here.
Mr. Nixon informed us that he cannot be here tonight and Mr. Conley is here. Um. I recognize, uh, Mr. Moore, our city planner and Mr. Womack, who's doing double duty tonight as city manager and assisting with some of the city clerk duties.
Assistant clerk, we'll go with assistant.
He'll be the assistant clerk tonight. Good. In your packet on page five, we have the minutes from the regular meeting. Of May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Like to look those over since to see if we can approve those. Any. Get a motion to approve those.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from last month.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Anything we need to look at? With that, all in favor of approving, uh, the minutes from May tenth, twenty twenty-two, please signify with I.
I.
I, all opposed. Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have the approval of the agenda, that's on page one, of course.
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second. Anything we need to add or, 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 uh, look at on that?
I'm not sure it's necessary, but we did receive a, uh, report from more in between the making of this agenda, uh, which is now in your possession. I don't know if you need to add it.
Relevant to what we already have on the agenda, it's just another piece of documentation, I'm not sure that we need to. Anything. Okay. With that, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify with I.
I.
I, all opposed. The agenda is approved. Um, item six is public comments, those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the meeting the citizens are allowed to address the planning commission, please state your name and address for the record if you would like. And let me just add, I can see that several people are here for site plans tonight, so you also have an opportunity to speak to those if, at that time. When we get there, but if you have any other public comments that you would like to make, uh, this is your opportunity, step on up. Not seeing a rush to the microphone, uh, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to have a public comment? Hearing none. Uh, we will move on to item seven. Complex of interest and ex parte communication inquiry, so if there are any members of the planning commission that have had, uh, that having no conflict of interest or they've had ex parte communication on any issues before us tonight, it's your opportunity to, uh, reveal those. If there is such. Hearing any, move on. Item eight, uh, we have two public scheduled, sorry, two scheduled public hearings tonight. Uh, the first one, item A is a public hearing for an ordinance to amend section thirty-two, five, fifty-six pertaining to swimming pools of chapter thirty-two zoning and the coordinates for the city of Cedar Springs. Uh, this proposed ordinance modifies and sets standards for swimming pools for the city of Cedar Springs. Uh, Mr. Womack, um, just as, or, or Mr. Moore, because you're probably kind of busy, yeah, whichever, I want to figure that out. I, I like to give just a very quick synopsis of what this is about for anyone who might not be familiar with it, in case they would like to comment during the public hearing. If you, if you either be would like to give that, that would be great.
Did you open the public hearing?
I was going to open it after the description of it.
Um, so the city's current, uh, pool ordinance is woefully inadequate. It basically says you can't put a pool underneath a set of power lines, um, obviously, uh, that's not sufficient for the safety of the citizens of Cedar Springs. Now, there are, uh, state laws and state codes that also apply, uh, and essentially what we're doing is we're taking those state laws and state codes and codifying it into our local ordinance. Um, even though they already apply, I think it makes it easier to explain to our citizens, um, that, you know, if you have a circulating, uh, water system, that you have to have a, uh, air brake and, you know, just these things that are commonplace, but not in the local.
Thank you. So with that, we'll open up the public hearing, if anyone would like to speak to that, uh, once again, the, the microphone is yours. Or for those on Zoom, you're welcome to, uh, ring in or signify that you'd like to speak to that. In a former life, I was a teacher, so there's a thing called wait time. Okay, no one's going, no one's going to raise their hands, so I guess we'll move on. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Um, and move on to the next public hearing, the next one is a public hearing for a special land use for trip provisions LLC at forty-one, sixteen, seventeen mile road, Cedar Springs. Applicant is seeking a, yes.
Want to run through the motion for recommending the old ordinance to the city council?
Oh, yes, I forgot there was a.
I didn't know if you wanted to do them both.
In fact, there was an actual, no, no, you're right, you're right, thank you, thank you for that.
You did change that recently, so.
Yeah. Um, uh, by the time I get a full rhythm on this, it'll be time to retire, so.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead.
Make the motion to recommend to the city council to approve an ordinance to amend section thirty-two, five, five, six pertaining to the swimming pools of chapter thirty-two zoning of the code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on that? What, we looked at this last, last time we were here, is there any significant changes since we last saw this?
Um, I did make very, very minor change. I believe I highlighted in yellow real quick. Doesn't change the meaning of the ordinance whatsoever, I just wanted to clarify some language in there.
We was page nine.
So this is page twelve, you'll see it highlighted, um, so I added in the words at minimum, uh, to the phrase, the line from public water supply to the pool shall be protected against backflow of polluted water at minimum by means of an air gap. Uh, because they could go above and beyond that if they want to. Um, and then same, uh, paragraph I added also, or otherwise required by code, um, because I didn't want to limit it, uh, to what we're putting in here, if the code changes.
The, there's another highlight part under item G.
Sorry. So. Under item G, unless a lockable or power safety cover is installed or other barriers are provided consistent with requirements of, I believe, Mr. Moore added that previously, so you've seen that once before. Um, and then same thing under H, including but not limited to the most recent adopted international swimming pool and spot code.
Okay. With that, any, uh, discussion, any questions on that? Not hearing any, um. All in favor of the motion to recommend, uh, this order change to the city council, please signify with I. I, all opposed. Uh, the motion carries. Now, we'll move on to item B. Item B is a public hearing for a special land use for trip provisions LLC at forty-one, sixteen, seventeen mile road, Cedar Springs. Uh, applicant is seeking a special land use approval for a recreational adult-use marijuana processor. Um, so, Mr. Um, Womack, could you help us understand a little bit what's going on here, uh, since I, I think we know we've done some stuff with this property in the past, as far as approvals?
Yep, okay, so under the city's ordinances, we don't allow the transfer of marijuana licenses, um, I think under the idea that we want to, uh, be able to review each applicant individually and not just allow them to trade back and forth. Um, so what we have going on here is in the HC zoning district, we require all marijuana retailers to co-locate with at least one processor or at least one grow operation. Um, so the Lake Life Farms retailer, uh, had both retail license and the processing license. Uh, but subsequent to that, uh, they decided they want to get out of the processing business for some reason, uh, not for us to, you know, wonder why, it doesn't really matter, uh, but they need to have a co-located business. So, uh, Trip Provisions LLC wants to take over the license, um, and do the same exact thing that was previously approved of, uh, for Lake Life Farms. So it's essentially a transfer of license, but we don't allow that here, so, um, if and when this board approves of the Trip Provisions LLC, uh, special land use at this location. You know, actually, now I'm thinking about it, technically, Lake Life Farms doesn't have to withdraw because you can have more than one processor, um, but there's only space for one, so. I suspect at some point they will withdraw their previous license and Trip, uh, Provisions LLC will go forward with the processing. That's basically what's going on here.
Okay. So with that, it will open up a public hearing on that issue, and so if you'd like to comment on that, uh, again, the microphone is yours, if you'd like to let us know your name and, um, your address, please. Also, it's, it's open to people on Zoom.
Browsy crowd tonight.
I'm good with it. I mean, I love, I love public, I love public comment, but same time, that's news is, is.
Yeah, they must think we're doing everything right.
I, absolutely. Either it's sullen silence, one of the two. Okay, um, with that, we'll close the public hearing. So, um. So. We're looking at page fifteen in here. So from us tonight, to clarify, what, what exactly do we have to do in order to make that happen?
Well, so you're reviewing the plans that were submitted by the applicant. And, uh, you know, it's essentially the same plan that was approved of previously.
Right.
Um, so what you're doing is reviewing, uh, the plan to make sure it's efficient, uh, under what you believe the ordinances require. You know, it's my belief that they've met their burden, um, I don't see any substantial changes from the previous, uh, submissions, uh, but it is your right as the overseeing board, uh, to make that decision for yourselves. Couple of things you could do is, uh, bring up anyone from the applicant who's here to discuss their application with them. Kill them as long as you'd like, uh, ask any questions that you might have of them and, uh, see if there's any, you know, concerns that you guys have with what they've submitted. And then at some point you'll have to consider, uh, approving of the special land use and, I guess, zoning permit.
So it's essentially what we have given before to Lake Life, but it has to be repeated.
Yeah, so.
If, if, if we deem that it's appropriate for.
Oh, uh, not that this is this scenario, but it's entirely possible for, you know, you guys to approve of a special land use for a processor for, you know, company A. And then company B comes in and says, well, we'd like to take over company's license, but instead we're going to, uh, you know, vent a lot of our smoke right into somebody's house next door. Well, then you would say, no, we're not going to allow that. Um, but if you find that what they've submitted meets the requirements independently and on their own, um, then you should approve of it.
Is there a representative that would like to speak to that tonight? Whoever would like to come up first, um, probably Matt, help us, help us understand.
So I'm Dave Coystra with Provisions and this is Matt Tripp.
You. Good. You had one? Okay, I thought you had, I thought you had a question there, uh, so. Did Mr. Womack accurately describe the process that you're going through at the moment?
Indeed, indeed. Exactly.
Um. Are there any changes from what, uh, we had originally agreed to with Lake Life Farms?
No, no, we're doing the same, same thing.
One thing I am curious about is, uh, where in the process are you and how long until you're, uh, able to start processing?
Sure, so, right now, as of, I mean, we, when we started on it, uh, just a couple of months ago, it was an abandoned, or not abandoned, uh. Like an old Chi, yeah, an old Chinese restaurant, so we had to gut it and, you know, get out of the engineering and all that stuff put together, so at this point, it's pretty much framed up, we had a couple of setbacks just with.
Walk-in freezer.
Yeah, just some things, right now with contractors, it's a bear, uh, every one of them is just jammed up, so you get one thing done and then you gotta wait for the next guy to come back and it's, it's tough, but I would say realistically, we're still a couple of months out. So it's built out and, and operational.
Yeah, the walk-in cooler is like a custom-sized walk-in cooler and it's just on back order and stuff like that.
We've got all the equipment and stuff ordered, paid for, delivered, um, it's just getting it all put together and. And that's just dependent on the contractors and the subs, which is.
Yeah.
With any building right now, it's challenging.
Every door has a punch code and swipe card, the control box that controls all those doors is also on back order, um, just little stuff like that.
That, that's not a, not a unique story from what we've.
Yeah.
Mr. Womack, you were.
So the reason it's important is because, uh, this board and the city's ordinances require retailers to co-locate with a processor. Um, right now, I'm not entirely sure we would call this an operational processor, um, which I'm not a hundred percent sure is required under the ordinance, but we do want, you know, an operational processor at some point. Um, so I, I just wanted this board to be comfortable with the fact that they're actually moving forward and it's not a shell corporation that's not actually going to do anything there.
Um, would there be, I don't, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but would it, you have, um, any pictures or anything like that of your progress?
Yeah, I believe, I believe, uh, it's been a, this is, do you, you have some recent ones?
I was in the building a couple of months back and I've been to this location a number of times, there's a ton of construction going on out there. I haven't seen inside the building recently, but it's well that this board's comfortable with it.
I mean, I'm personally comfortable that it, it's as long as you all.
Yeah.
Feel the same way.
I've seen a picture.
Sure.
Yeah, we want it to be built up and operational as, as quickly as possible too, so we're babysitting it and riding as hard as we can.
I'm, I'm assuming most people wouldn't.
Well, this was.
Want to just keep it on.
This was a video of May twelfth. So I'm just showing here the firewall, because the state requires a two-hour firewall, um, and May twelfth, this firewall is completed.
Okay.
Um, and this was an old China's, Chinese, or China won buffet.
Yeah, yeah.
It was pretty, pretty gross, grease all over the floors and walls, we had to pretty much rip out everything.
Oh, it tasted so good.
It never tastes as good as the first.
I do appreciate all the.
It was all new.
Yeah.
Information you sent.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
That's very helpful.
All right, I'm fine.
They did previously submit receipts to my office showing the.
Okay. So, um. There's a thing I hear about an approval of a zoning permit, I mean, is that part in?
Yeah, so, uh, it's kind of a judgment call sometimes, uh, the law says special land uses shall be accompanied by a site plan. Um, but, you know, existing building with an existing parking lot that just recently went through a whole site plan with the previous, you know, I didn't feel it was necessary, um, so to, but you do have to submit something from a special land use. So occasionally we do allow a zoning permit as an alternative to a special, uh, a site plan.
And that zoning permit is what we have in here in our packet.
Correct.
We have to deal with the residential issue, and I know we've dealt with this site a couple of times with that issue.
Yep.
And I know I missed the last two meetings.
Yeah, no, so if you actually look at the parcel viewer now, you'll see that there is, let's say.
Yeah, there was a gap.
Interviewing parcel.
Okay.
It's legal fiction, but it's what's.
That's fine, as long as we're, no one needs to be done, I'm happy, yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, um, you're welcome to sit down if you'd like, I will leave you up there forever if I don't.
Appreciate your time, thanks so much.
Any other questions or concerns from the planning commission? I'll make the motion, it's right here in front of me. I'd like to move to approve of a zoning permit and special land use for trip provisions LLC for recreational marijuana processor at forty-one, sixteen, seventeen mile road. The thing else we need to address or. Before we move on with that. Okay. All in favor of the motion, please signify with I. I, all opposed. Motion carries. And we're moving on then to, um, item nine, site plan reviews. And nine A is a motion to approve of the site plan for the White Creek Flats multi-family development project to be located on the property common and notice fourteen, three hundred White Creek Avenue, subject to the following conditions. And actually, uh, before I get into that, I can get this kind of an description of where we're at on this at the moment and. And what, what we can reasonably do tonight.
Let me first apologize to Mr. Owens, I should have probably put his first, so he'll just hang out with us for a little bit longer.
This is, this is just a, a giant apartment complex, I'm sure we've done it a couple of minutes.
So, uh, this is a piece of property that is, uh, kind of north of the hotel, the Holiday Inn Hotel on White Creek Avenue. Uh, don't know the acreage, it's a significant piece of property, um, we've seen this once before, uh, staff and, uh, the mayor and I have worked with these people for a couple of months now, so it's not a new project. Um, so we met, I believe, two months ago, uh, reviewed the project at that time, uh, came up with a shortlist of modifications, uh, that we'd like to see. I've, I've unfortunately been too busy, so I have not had the opportunity to review the resubmission that, uh, Mr. Moore has for us. So I think what we're going to be looking for tonight is allow Mr. Moore to walk you through, uh, kind of his old report, uh, and the modifications have been made, and, uh, I'm sure that he can tell you whether it's a good project ready to move forward.
So, um, there is a staff report that we provided on March twenty-nine, that was two meetings ago, um, we're not going to go through that entire thing because it's sixteen pages long and don't want to put your ass to sleep. But the applicant did provide, uh, so at the end of that process though, um, for those of, for those of you who are here, uh, we had a handful of comments and suggestions and we spent some time discussing, uh, with the applicant. So, planning commission didn't take any action at that time, um, and the applicant presumably went, went, went to work, uh, on making the changes that were requested. So in the memo that we wrote dated June sixth, uh, starting at the bottom of page two and scrolling onto page, I'm sorry, bottom page one, continuing onto page two, we tried a summary here of the changes they have made since the last. Overall, the overall design, number of units, everything is the same, so they didn't make any, you know, significant changes where they're moving buildings around and making major, major changes like that. We did observe, uh, at the April meeting that there, we thought anyways that their sidewalk network needed to be improved, there were some areas where it didn't connect very well to some of the amenities, uh, so they had made a bunch of those, those changes. Made some slight modifications to, uh, some of the other amenities like the size of the dog park in the community building are slightly. Figure and still, you know, very, again, five feet here, two feet there kind of thing. Very, very small changes, added a patio with a fireplace, uh, to the rear of the community building, um, they added sidewalk connections, uh, to allow people to access the dumpster on the site. Uh, they added the locations of light poles and they added on there a note, uh, it would not exceed eighteen feet for all the fixtures, I think your ordinance maximum is twenty feet, so that's compliant. Uh, there was some discussion at that meeting about a future, about a sidewalk along, uh, Solon Street, so they added a future five-foot sidewalk on the site plan there. Um, they added a proposed twelve-inch water main down the length of the access drive that comes off of White Creek Avenue into the project. Uh, the grading and stormwater plan is pretty much the exact same. They added, uh, some additional numbers to the lighting plan, so at, at the last meeting, we had observed that the. What metrics they had provided did not continue those foot handle valiums all the way out to the property boundaries, which is where we're primarily concerned about lighting, so they, they added those and those are all, uh, in compliance. Um, they updated the landscaping plan to include plantings on the west property boundary and along the south side of the access drive from, from, from White Creek, so that, those were areas that we highlighted. Deficient in landscaping on the previous application, so they have, uh, added, added some, some. Landscaping there, uh, those are primarily in air, in areas where there is not any natural vegetation, and so there is some existing, um, kind of natural stuff there on, on the site, so that would stay, and so in those areas where there is already existing. We wouldn't have to put in more, but in the areas where there's nothing, we've now added some. Um. It also included, um, building elevations and a floor plan for the community building and for the, for the garage buildings. The garage buildings are obviously fairly unremarkable in terms of their floor plan, the community building includes a small fitness room and a, in the community room, so, um, it just provides additional clarity in terms of what they're actually proposing there. Um, so there's a few things here, I guess, to. Um, so there's a few things here, I guess, to, that we'll need to talk about. Um, we observed at the last meeting, um, this is primarily with respect to the rezoning request. There's language in the master plan that talks about traditional neighborhood development. Um, which, you know, we said it's, it's, you know, planners speak for a pre-World War II design that's, you know, sort of a pedestrian oriented instead of an auto-oriented design. Um, buildings facing the street, porches, all that kind of stuff. Um, this design accomplishes some of that, but not all of it in our view. So it's not something that I would consider like a traditional neighborhood development. But it's not, you know, the opposite of that either. If you offer a pretty good sidewalk network, they have a lot of amenities there for residents and for guests. Which we have, which we, uh, which we appreciate. Um, it's still, you know, in our view, follows a, a fairly typical suburban development form. Um, so part of this is just as the planning commission considers that rezoning. So there's a bunch of moving parts here, right? There's the four twenty-five and the project has to get rezoned into this R-three district. Where all, all of this can happen. So as the planning commission talks about the rezoning request, I think that's one of the things to, to consider is how consistent this is with, with the master plan. Um, and then at the last meeting, I don't know if we ever, if the planning commissioner came to affirm decision on this, but. Um, there was some discussion about parking and so we noticed that they're actually overparked by what the ordinance requires. So the zoning ordinance has language in there that says you cannot exceed the minimum parking requirement by more than ten percent. Point of that kind of a provision is to limit. Imperative surface for no reason. Um, if you count the garage spaces, which we did. They have exceeded that re, that requirement by twenty-three percent. So, um, that was an area where, um, you know, he, we kind of flagged that. So what they're required to have is somewhere, um. Yes, something less than they have, so they can't exceed the, the minimum, just not quite so much. Um, so this, you know, gives them probably forty-four more spaces that are over what the maximum is in the ordinance. Um, there is language in there that says that, you know, they can submit evidence that justifies the additional parking. The planning commission. Um, we haven't seen that, so that's something I think we could talk about with the applicant if they could provide some sort of. Documentation that will help sort of justify why, why they've done that or some data that would help explain that. Um, we were comfortable with, with the lighting plan as it was shown. We were comfortable with the landscaping plan as it was shown. Um, the parking lot landscaping, there's some picky things there that we had flagged. Those have been adjusted. Um, there was some discussion at the last meeting about the dumpster enclosures. So they had proposed wood originally. They've upped it, updated those to state. Um, that they will be a split face block with a gate and we, and we think that satisfies. So, um, subject to those couple of items, primarily the overall consistency with the master plan and how you feel about that. And the parking issue, um, we think this, you know, meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So, uh, there are some options, I think, as far as moving forward. If you want to approve the site plan, you can. Uh, that would be subject to the four twenty-five agreement. And the rezoning being approved and effective, both of those things that are ordered out by the city councils. So there's still some steps that they would have to go through along those lines. Um, but if you're comfortable doing that, that's certainly one thing that you could do. Um, I saw that Mr. Will Mac provided some language in, in the. The agenda, we also wrote out a maybe too lengthy uh, motion for you that's on page four and five. Um, that has six conditions that would attach to the site plan approval. Um, alternatively, if you want to wait and try and do all this at once, you could, you know, talk with the applicant, request a petition. Or discussion, then of course you could always postpone a decision again. As large as kind of what your comfort level is and within how you feel about some of the.
If I interpret this correctly, the rezoning request. We have to actually have a public hearing before we can record.
Correct.
Yep. So, um, part of this entire process, of course, is getting the rezoning.
This is definitely an ongoing thing. Uh, not only do they need to get the four twenty-five and rezoning accomplished. But there's also obviously a significant amount of work being put into the utilities extension, which is likely going to be brownfield for DDA. There's lots of people, lots of hands on this. Um, I think what applicant is looking for is, is it moving forward? So what we have done in the past is even if you're not comfortable moving forward today, which I don't know if you are or not. But you could at the very least tell applicant, hey, uh, we think it's provable. We just want to wait until the rezoning hearing to approve it. But either way, it works for me. Um, just some comments about what Mr. Moore has indicated. Um, I, I understand both his arguments about the master plan and also the parking uh, issue. Um, I think the city's master plan is in desperate need of being fixed. Um, I think it's a poorly done master plan. Um, and we're looking forward to maybe Mr. More updating it for us next year. Uh, we're planning to budget for that. Um, and on the parking issue, uh, I agree. Um, this board has taken kind of a laissez-faire attitude towards parking in the past. Uh, but the ordinance does require the applicant to at least address it and give you reasoning for it. Um, but beyond that, I'd be comfortable moving forward.
And we did discuss the parking two mo, months ago.
Yeah.
About the extra space and then talked about when they have guests that come over and the need, some people use the garages for storage and.
We just didn't come to a full conclusion.
We just didn't come to, well, we did understand why they're asking for more spots.
So you could say that's your reasoning if you want.
So as far as, it, it seems like there's a couple of different issues here between the rezoning request and the site plan.
Correct.
So, um, should we break this up into two things and, and deal with them separately? Or should it all be at once with one motion?
It's kind of the board's call. Uh, there is no rezoning request right now. You have to hold a public hearing for that before you make a recommendation to the city council. So the only thing you're really uh, looking at today really is approval of the site plan. But you could also ask applicant if they have preference.
Um, yeah, and then if, I, I think there's value in us discussing and at least coming to, uh, you know. Getting whatever information we can get about the rezoning so that we can set the public hearing and act on that next, next time if it is, is necessary. Um, so I'm not going to not talk about the rezoning question, but yeah, you're right. There's, we can't actually act on it.
Um, besides the site plan.
We can, yes, that, that aspect of it. We can certainly talk about the site plan here and decide if we're going to move forward or not with that. So, um, I'm guessing uh, that you would like to be recognized and we can.
But I just wanted to add something to this.
Right ahead.
About the parking.
Um, if you could state your name first.
I'm sorry, Todd Stevie XL Engineering.
Thank you.
Um, we, we did submit and apparently didn't get passed along. Um, we did submit a letter from the applicant regarding the parking. Um, where uh, basically they looked back at two of their uh, existing or similar projects. Where they're showing uh, like two point nine uh, spaces per unit and. Almost six uh, spaces per unit. We're somewhere down in that, I think, two point two spaces per unit here. Um, so that they, you know, they, they have submitted some justification for that. Tho, those projects worked very well for them. They, they never experienced parking issues. I think the other thing to point out. We, we do have ten barrier-free spaces in that count. Now, people certainly, there may, they may be used, but I think you, we all noticed that those usually are not used. So that's a space that really could come off that total practically speaking. So that we think, we think that it's, it's justified and I just wanted to point out that and it maybe you didn't, it certainly didn't get to Andy, but. Um, I don't know if you got that or not, but it's a letter from Fusion Properties.
Not sure, was that in our?
I never got it. Sometimes stuff, it's, you know, junk mail.
Okay, so if you could make sure that the, that the city manager gets a copy of it.
Yeah.
Resubmit it, well, we'll, that sounds like the kind of thing that we're looking for, but. Thank you.
Yes, as if we're going to request something, we would actually like approval of the site plan if we could. With just one step forward, so we know we don't have to come back and go through it. We think we've addressed the previous concerns. If there's something that's still concerning, let us know. We're happy to address it. But um, we've tried to take everything that was given at the last meeting and, and take care of it. We also did have a meeting um, with Mr. Womack and the uh, head of uh, utilities. And went through basically our internal utilities and we did change some of the looping. So I think we've gotten that resolved as well, so. Oh, sorry, Doug Alker Fusion Properties, the developer.
So, so, so I don't lose any steps. Um. I'm going to open it up to the planning commission. Uh, yeah, not that, not that I was keeping it away from you, but. Is there anything else that you would like to refer to or ask questions about or?
I don't really have any questions. I just know that, you know, the things that we addressed two mo, months ago, they came back. They've made all the changes that we've asked for and, I mean, I mean, the site plan seems really complete, you know. I wouldn't have a problem moving forward with their site.
The conditions.
Yeah, yeah, of course, with the four twenty-five and the rezoning.
Yeah, and the, the parking issue with that. Um, what's everyone's opinion? Is this efficient, what we've heard so far? Do you want to hear more?
The parking myself, I have no problem with. I think they need extra spots if guests come to see people there. I mean, I don't want to give them less parking and, I mean, you can, you can't have just enough parking for the residents. There's going to be guests that stop by.
I'm curious, this just occurred to me, um, Mr. Moore. Uh, when we're doing the calculations for the number of spaces, the spaces that are next to the um, community building and the spaces that are next to the dog park. Are those included in that? So, uh, if it's January and so on in the com, in the complex wants to drive to the. Rather than walk, wants to drive to the community building, it would need another space at that place to accommodate them if they were going to do that. That would be above and beyond what's in our calculations. Um. That was, that was the thing when I saw that, it just, I thought. If we treated those separately from the rest of the parking for the, for the building, we might be closer. I don't know the exact formula. But.
For what it's worth, in, in my liberal utopia of everybody's walking and riding their horse or whatever. Um, you know, we wouldn't need as many parking spaces, but I think we all acknowledge we live in a automobile-centric world. Is, are better to have more parking spaces than fewer parking spaces. Um, if anyone's ever had the pleasure of driving through the mobile home park, their car is parked every which way. Uh, it's a constant battle making sure that they don't block the actual roadway because if there's ever a fire in there, fire trucks are very wide. Um, and I'm not entirely sure we can get our fire trucks through their roads. So I'd rather there be a few extra parking spaces. I, Mr. Moore does this for a living, but my understanding of the reason we have this ordinance is because we don't want. Uh, not to pick on Meyer, but the Meyer slash Walmart parking lot where there's six hundred extra parking spaces. It's a, you know, it's a sea of asphalt. I don't see that happening here.
I was personally comfortable with the amount of spaces I saw compared to the uses I anticipated.
And there's green spaces in there, right, if I recall?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That was.
Yeah, it's a great site.
Between guests and the, and the multiple uses that are going to be on this property where people may decide to move vehicles from one place to the other. I was curious about the community building. I've seen um, other places where the community building can be rented out for a time. To members of, of the community. But if you're, if you'd like to ask that, is it possible that?
You're saying outside of the rental community?
Well, that the rental community could, uh, for instance, they could, they could hold a party and they could, they could.
Typically do allow private events of the residents, yes.
At which point we're bringing in more cars from the outside that need a place to go without taking.
Yes, resident.
Resident parking.
Yep.
Okay, that, thank you. So. With that, I want to see this. We think with just three things in front of me, I'll figure out which one I needed. Here we go. Um. I'm going to use the motion then that uh. Mr. Moore made for us in, in his memo dated June sixth. Do you need me, if you're acting as clerk at the moment or assistant clerk at the moment, Mr. Will Mac, do you need me to read the entire motion or do you have?
No, I have the motion in front of me. If you'd like, you can just say, you know, I approve number one, number two, number three, as written.
Okay, then I'll read the opening paragraph and, and then, and continue. So I move to approve this, the site plan for apartment complex located at fourteen three hundred White Creek Avenue. Northeast uh, PP and forty-one zero two two five three hundred zero four six White Creek Flats. The planning commission further finds based on William Works staff reports dated March twenty-nine, twenty-two, and June third, twenty-two. That the proposed site plan meets all applicable standards of the city of City Springs zoning ordinance. Including but not limited to the standards related to parking, lighting, rough use, actual dimensional requirements in the site plan review criteria. Specified in section thirty-two sixty-nine of the city or City Springs zoning ordinance. The site plan approval is subject to the following conditions uh, that are numbered one, two, three, four, five and six in here. If that's sufficient, or you, Mr. Manager, then I'll just leave it at that.
Yep, so the requirements that I had written down uh, were subject to the four twenty-five. Let's see, that's number four, uh, subject to the rezoning. That's also in there and then subject to approval of the city engineer, which is also in there, so I'm satisfied.
Second.
Any further discussion? With that, all in favor of the motion, please signify with I. I, all opposed. Site plans approved.
So, Mr. Conley, uh, as an aside, then, do you have any objections? Rezoning recommendations for the next meeting?
Think that would be a great idea to set a public hearing. Do you need a motion from us to do that?
No, I just want to make sure I'm listening.
Okay.
Mr. Conley.
Yes.
I do believe that the four twenty-five would need to be executed before we can rezone the property because the property is not currently within the city limits. I don't know if Mr. Moore has any suggestion on that.
Ms. Johnson, is it the council or is it the planning commission that approves of the rezoning? Or is it going to be a recommendation from planning commission to the city council?
I believe it's the planning commission that approves of the rezoning, but the four twenty-five is approved of by the city council.
The, the rezoning is, is a recommendation from planning commission to city council. So planning commission has to hold a hearing on that. So the planning mission, it's your point, I think you're, you're right. Um, I suppose a planning commission could hold the public hearing and then council could approve of the four twenty-five first. It would bring it into city and then either at the same or at a subsequent meeting, after that four twenty-five has been completed, it could then approve the rezoning.
Is, is there anything in what I've just, in what we've just passed that would follow that up or can maybe be addressed at the next meeting?
No, I think this is mostly just uh, three professionals trying to figure out a timing schedule. We'll, we'll, we'll sort it out and make sure.
Okay. Um, then we'll move on to item uh, item B. Under the site planner views, a motion to approve the zoning permit and special land use, proposed use of the fifty-four North Park Street property as a church. So, we've seen this before. Uh, we just couldn't fully go through with it. Um, because there were some issues with um, how our ordinance were and so ordinances have changed since then. I believe that everyone that's remaining in here knows exactly what was going on with that. So there's not anyone to have to explain it to. Um. Oh, that's true. Explain it to Ms. Atchison, I'm sorry.
To be fair, Ms. Atchison did. After the city council made it.
So I will, I was, I was trying to see if I could avoid my typical. Make Mike explain it, but.
I like talking, so it's fine.
Right.
Um, so the old ordinance, uh, I, I didn't look and see what the date was, but it was again, very outdated. Um, not only did it only list churches and not mosques or temples or anything else. Um, but the requirements of, I, I think were inappropriate to the proposed use. Um, so uh, this board and the city council reviewed that ordinance and have passed a modified ordinance that takes its place. Um, I do not think that this uh, proposed site plan would have been approvable under the old ordinance. Uh, but I do believe that it does and or should meet all of the new requirements. Uh, but I will leave that to the applicant uh, to be grilled upon. So if you'd like to bring up the applicant, you can ask him whether he meets those requirements.
As, as the applicant's former deputy, I would love to do that.
Please identify yourself, sir.
Craig Owens, three fifty-five Ronald Street.
Mr. Owens, what can we do for you today?
No, I really appreciate, I, I know how long of a process this is uh, for you guys, um, having to go through these ordinance. I really appreciate, I, I know how long of a process this is for you guys having to go through these ordinance things. So thank you for taking the time to, to do all that. So, yeah, we, I, I prepared a memo for you before, looking at the, the different things that were asked for with the site plan and then the ordinance for the special land use for the church. And so I think that those are all addressed in there. The, as I mentioned in there, parking is really kind of limited more for us to the size of the building. We can only fit a certain number of people in the building. And so I think that that puts us well within the limits for the parking spaces that are available on site.
I think the issue that we tried to address with the ordinance was, you know, if a wedding or a funeral or or mitzvahs to occur at this place, we don't want people parking up and down the middle of the road in a residential.
Any questions from the planning commission?
I just realized I said apartments for a church. That's not a problem, is it?
I get, I get your point, though, that's, that's.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
And then, um, we already had special land use, public hearing, so then.
So I guess what I would be looking for would be a motion to approve of the zoning permit and special land use for the proposed use at fifty-four North Park. But specifically, would you cite that the planning commissions believe that it meets all the requirements of the new ordinance?
I personally believe that, but if someone else wants to make a similar motion.
I agree.
I'll make a motion then. I make a motion to approve the zoning permit and the special land use for proposed use to fifty-four North Park Street property as a church and based on our agreement that this this use is appropriate under the new ordinance that we've recently that we've recently passed, the city council's recently passed ordinance number thirty-two six nine six B. The discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify with aye. Aye, all opposed? Earlier than ever. Thank you.
Does that go over the whole planning commission?
Make sure we enunciate our potential bribes. So, okay. That's a joke for anyone.
In case you don't know.
That in the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to other business. Item A, under other business, item ten A, review and discuss proposed industrial building facade requirements ordinance.
Yes. So again, and I apologize, sometimes feel like I put you guys on the back burner. I try not to do that. I try to do that to the downtown development authority, not you guys, but I believe Mr. Moore has compiled both of the stuff, the language he uses normally in other communities, along with some of the requirements that we've worked out previously. If I recall correctly, having reviewed it, it looked like it met all the things I wanted to say.
This is page one oh nine, pray that, that haven't.
But I believe what I was trying to do was limit the number of, you know, ordinances or processing through at the same time, and it's not a rush. Like, one of the reasons that we are even addressing this, again, so we have an ordinance on the books that addresses the commercial facade. We did not have anything that addressed industrial facade. And I, I wasn't sure that this board wanted to hold industrial buildings of the same scene as just commercial buildings. So it's kind of born out of that. And I think we may want to at some point here shortly also address the commercial facade. Now that we have Mr. Moore and he'll be here for the next twenty-five years, I might want to, you know, kind of meet with what his expectations are and what, you know, he's worked with previously, but that's something for a different day. So, this board has already held a public hearing on the pools ordinance. And we can review this, discuss it if you want, and then this will be a recommendation for you guys for next.
Sure, so we, I see we have some new items that were added in. The stuff that's in the red here, I'm guessing is the new stuff?
Yeah, so what this does is under thirty-two five fifty-two subsections A and B, that's all the stuff that's in your ordinance presently for non-residential buildings, so we're just tacking a new section onto the bottom of that, that's subsection C that pertains specifically to industrial buildings. And then, what we've done here under C, we have one, one and two, and then A through D underneath that, and what primarily we just sort of put together some of what we had discussed at, at the last meeting, some of the items that I liked and some of what you liked and sort of tried to write and sign it together into something that read well and made, made sense. Are any, you know, things that we missed or that need to be fine to and further, this would be a good time to point those out.
I really like the fact that this is telling us, you know, here's what the standard we're looking for and that the planning commission can approve something else based upon these additional standards gives us, you know, not just yeah, it gives us flexibility, but we have to, we have something we can point to as to what we're referring to. And it's not just anything we pull out of the air.
Yeah, I mean, this, this question is great, but these A through D helps to provide some guidance to that discretion, so. Not that this planning commission would ever do that, but some future rogue planning commission would just, you know, pull something out of thin air to that.
Not even necessarily that, I mean, assuming all future planning commission type of the best of intentions that are doing things wonderfully. If we have a, an, a standard that is mutable without any limits whatsoever, we don't have a standard. So, the fact that there are some, this A, B, C, and D in here that says we can change within these parameters actually helps us as a planning commission against what an applicant might say, well, you have the power to change it. Gives us something to point back to.
Say, yeah, this is what we can change, yeah, yeah.
I don't want to monopolize this stuff, so any other comments or questions or?
No, I like it. And that's the one thing I'd like to.
Anything else you guys want to see in there before we bring it back for recommendation next month?
Looks pretty good.
I'm happy deferring to the professional. You do this for a living, so. Yeah, I mean, so. You know, the, I, the goal here is to require some ornamentation, but not be overly burdensome, right? So. Under subsection two, with requiring the twenty-five percent of any first floor to be consisted of, you know, to consist of brick, stone, et cetera. What we might see a lot of is the, you know, three foot of brick as a weight supporting material and then just paneling on top of that. So this isn't a particularly high standard and it's not going to guarantee a bunch of ornate designs. So I just, something to be aware of, the intent here was to simply have a clearly identified entrance with a canopy of some kind, some, you know, some minimal architectural variation besides a metal box with a door in it. We'll accomplish that for sure. Sometimes we struggle with applicants when we require things like windows for industrial buildings, just because you just does not lend itself well.
Yeah. And I, you know, I can't forget, it's an industrial building. I mean, it's not a commercial main street building. I think what you got in there is going to make nice looking buildings, not, not just plain giant steel buildings, you know.
So one thing I would point out, which, again, I apologize, did not seem to make this, this ordinance here, is under a previous iteration, I believe I required that all office space located the first floor with an outside wall would require a window. I can tell you right now, sitting in my office, if I didn't have a window, I'd go start breaking mad some days. And I think it's such a minimal requirement that if they're going to have office space inside this industrial building, you know, as opposed to people walking around and, you know, working all day. If, if they have an office space, maybe we'd want to require at least one.
Go for that. I mean, they shouldn't have a lot of deadly devices that would break a window inside an office space.
I mean, Mike's got a window, so.
Exactly. I mean, we hardly let him out.
But he does got a tinted over, so people can't see him.
Yeah, tinted, it's mirrored, which works great during the day, but in the middle of winter when it's dark at five o'clock, I can't see out.
Yeah.
But anyway, so that's one thing I did notice. Otherwise, you know, it's fairly basic and simple. And I understand Mr. Moore's point, it's not going to create overly ornate buildings. On the other hand, I don't think that's wanted. When I read through these standards, something that comes to mind is the new fire station building. The apparatus bay would basically meet these requirements. I think it's a nice looking building for what its purposes. So I guess, Mr. Chair, would you like to see something regarding office space and windows next year?
I would be, well, I would I would welcome that. I, I wouldn't want to forget that if that was a if, if our lack of addressing it here would result in a lot of poor office workers being turned into morats, I wouldn't want that to happen. So certainly, let's give them some light.
I'm sure Mr. Moore can draft some good language.
Okay, so that's, this was just a discussion, so we don't have anything else on that, I'm guessing. So, item B, viewing and discuss the minimum maximum parking requirements. We, do we have anything new on this or is this?
Also, just, yeah, briefly, so going back a year now, when Mr. Johnson was still here, I, I did review a number of other communities to find maybe a better, different way of doing this. I, I couldn't find one, you know, I looked at Sparta, Rockford, Greenville. Everybody has some form of, if you have this type of building, you have this many parking spaces. And, and that's fine. It helps both us and developers, you know, have an understanding of, again, most developers, this is not their first rodeo. They generally know and they actually did submit paperwork today saying, hey, look, we've done this before, this is how many parking spaces we need. Same thing with the Jim and John. But, you know, there are some people who A, either have never done projects before, or B, I think are trying to skirt under the minimum because they don't care about the parking, they're not going to be the ones dealing with, you know, parking issues will be the ones doing it. So it's helpful in that way, but I think the more important problem, a way to resolve this is the language that Mr. Johnson pointed out, and I'm sure Mr. Moore is aware of, is actually in six one six, thirty-two six one six. It's very weak language to give the planning commission authority to modify the minimum slash maximum requirements. Now, the maximum requirements, as we dealt with today, ten percent over the minimum, and if not, they have to submit some kind of evidence to show that there's reasoning behind why they're putting in more spaces. I'm comfortable with that. You know, that gives you guys the authority to review the evidence submitted and make a determination whether it's appropriate. But I would like to, at the very minimum, beef, beef up the language under six one six, six one six, to give the planning commission a little bit more authority and maybe some better guidelines about why you would, you know, allow something other than what's the minimum requirement. Again, I'm sure Mr. Moore has some history with this, and maybe he can come up with some language for us. So really, it's just, it's a legal requirements thing, but also for, you know, future guidance for you guys.
It's a, yeah.
Prepared for that today, hopefully next one.
It is a I won't speak for anyone else, but personally, when we're trying to say this looks right, but we don't have something to point to as to why, as to a standard that we're applying that makes us think it looks right, that's difficult.
Can't identify, but you know, when you see it. So I'm pretty sure it's about pornography.
I was trying to figure out how to timed out if I was, if you're going to let me be the straight man or you on that one, so. Yeah, exactly. So some standards related to parking would be helpful as to where we have the discretion or why we would have this discretion, be able to point to, okay, because you said this, we can do this and this. Would be helpful, but I also understand that we're not going to have a perfect, well, it looks like, or anything, it's never going to happen.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just remind the board that when we were discussing the I'm Skyment and Jimmy John's project, I did some more research at that time to discuss bike racks, electric parking, you know, and those types of things that if the applicant were to put that into their project, it would then give this board more authority to, you know, whatever. So, i- it should be seen as an opportunity to maybe get other things out of the applicant that we wouldn't normally get and not just giving away the house for free.
And I would be really interested to hear what we, we've talked about bike racks, we've talked about charging stations, what other kind of unusual things or progressive things that other communities are doing to try to, to, to better their community through their application of parking. If we can do that, I'm more than willing to hear about them.
Yeah. I think there certainly are lots of things out there. It's a question of how far do we want to push. You know, I, I like to think of myself as fairly progressive in getting the city moving forward and making it better for, you know, the citizens, but at some point, you're going to cross over a threshold of, yes, it's nice, but how expensive are they?
Oh, yeah.
So, a lot of the things that I would want to see be replacement for the parking would be other things that promote other alternative means of getting there, such as sidewalks and bike racks and, you know, these types of things, which we either already require or we've pretty much already thought of. Beyond that, there are some very expensive things we can do. I just, I'm not comfortable requiring that of applicants, but something we'll, we'll put some research into for next meeting.
Right.
No, I mean, some communities have gone so extreme as to just eliminate all of their parking requirements entirely in terms of product use. I don't. We've taken the approach where we write these sections now, it's referred to them more as a guide instead of a hard standard, so come up with, you know, two spaces per unit or something. It's like, well, this is probably where you need to be, but, you know, again, there's some language in there throughout for flexibility. With guidance, kind of like we did with the other type of Other than that, yeah, I think we can, we can come up with some alternatives.
Okay, so, item eleven, open discussion for issues not on the agenda. Respondents, there's the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two calendar that's always on there. Is there anything else? Respondent wise that we need to look at?
So next month's meeting is a week later.
Yeah, when is next? I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I saw it on there.
Oh, probably because of the fourth. I don't have to do this on my birthday again. Staff comments, city manager.
Just as an aside, tying in marijuana and parking requirements. So generally speaking, I think we've been fairly lucky with the developers. In the last couple of years, for the most part, they want to put in decent, high quality stuff. You know, and we've had minimum commentary about, you know, things that need to be changed. But I did have one proposed marijuana development that would have been, I think, put into the Save-A-Lot building. And he proposed eliminating virtually all parking in exchange for what do you call it, when somebody drops their car off, a valet system. You want to put a valet system in there for his marijuana business. So people dropped off their car and then when they were done making their purchase, they would be valeting back to their car. Didn't bring that one to you guys. I just told them that wasn't going to fly here in the city, but occasionally we do get rare, strange things that pop through the office and, you know, there's a reason we have standards, so.
That seems weird when they got a huge parking lot there that they would.
I think, I think it went more along the lines with his business plan. But I, I, I refer to it as the eight mile strip club plan.
Yeah.
You know, is there parking there? There's, there's a ton of parking there, but I think you want to create a, an atmosphere of a high-end VIP experience, and that was part of his plan, so. Yeah, weird stuff. Anyways, other than that, yeah, we've got a couple of light meetings. And that was part of his plan. So, yeah, weird stuff anyways. Other than that, yeah, we've got a couple of light meetings. And I appreciate that you guys are. Oh, concerts in the park and free movies at the computer. I apologize. Beetlejuice tonight. We're all missing it.
Missing it right now. Thanks, Mike.
And from the city clerk.
I just wanted to apologize that I wasn't able to be there in person tonight. We've got some illness going through the family, so. Just wanted to say sorry for that, but Lisa, you made mention that the meeting is going to be July twelfth. Just reminder of that. Other than that, just have a safe Fourth of July.
Get better or people in your family get better, whoever, however that may apply. Thank you, Mr. Members. Like that?
I was just going to talk about, I mean, off topic right now, but on Pine Street, you know, where the CTA put the soccer field in. You know, they ended up doing like sidewalk all the way to the edge of their property. And it goes back to talking to White Pine Flats about future sidewalk on Pine Street. And they're like, well, there is no sidewalk on Pine Street. Well, now there's a big chunk of sidewalk on Pine Street.
Yeah, there's an intervening property owner who's in the township.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm like, it sure would be nice someday to go all the way down and then down White Creek.
I suspect that the city council will at some point start enforcing its parking. I'm sorry, it's our it's sidewalk requirements.
Yeah.
For the last several years, we've allowed all businesses to opt out.
Yeah.
There's no joining sidewalks, but. I think we're getting to a point where they're going to force that.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I mean, that new sidewalk looks so nice down Pine Street with that new development coming. Boy, it sure would be nice to see. Of course. His property is all woods through there in a ditch and it would take a lot to get a sidewalk across this property, but it would be nice.
For what it's worth, the city was initially granted a, I shouldn't say initially, preliminarily. Granted a sidewalk grant for Fifth Street. So we anticipate there to be a full ADA compliant sidewalk from Pine Street to Muskegon on the west side of Fifth Street.
Okay.
Including a pedestrian bridge over the creek.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it'd be nice to tie it around someday.
The other planning commission members.
Just wanted to throw that out there.
Um, I wanted to, again, thank everyone for getting us done so quickly. I looked at this tonight and said. There's a lot of things on here. They're all relatively easy to get through, but there were a lot of things on there. And again, welcome, Ms. Atchison, back. Or however long you choose to. Bless us with your presence. And with that, we now have someone we can turn the city council representative over to, since we don't, and we don't have rows here tonight in the audience, so.
Well. I don't really have that much of a report. We'll do it. I'll I'll make a better effort next time.
No news is good news. Record the planning consultant. You need to know.
Um. Keep working here and keep moving ahead and we're happy that we were able to get. Reviewed and turned it on to you guys.
I think I like that. So with that.
We're not too busy, just slightly.
Slightly busy. We often agree with that.
We don't have any three hour meetings.
It's an hour ten. So here we go. We're jerked.
All right.
Hour eleven.
Hour eleven.
Yeah, we started. We're almost a minute late once we got started.